Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening on this snowy Tuesday evening. The first item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of the minutes from the January 9th, 2024 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Ms. Ryan Mott?
Yes.
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 Simone?
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well tonight, and we'll try and keep the meeting moving so we can get you out before the snow gets our roads slippery. I have a couple of personnel updates tonight. I have a few new hires, which we're excited about. We have a Brianna Clifford, who is a Webster Middle School math interventionist. We have John Dowd Jr., who is an ABA at Webster Middle School. It's been a good month, Webster Middle School, huh, Ms. Peterson? And then, I know I'm gonna mess up her last name, so I think I'm just gonna say Lulu. She has worked in Webster before at the high school. She is returning to us. She is gonna be a Webster Middle School paraprofessional. We did have a couple retirements. We have Ann Thompson, who is our Park Ave Elementary Assistant Principal, effective June 30th. She will be retiring. And we had Ann Jackart, speech and language pathologist, an assistant speech and language pathologist, who will be retiring effective June 30th also. And then tonight, I would like to have, do a special recognition. We have a retirement of someone who is very near and dear to me, who I've had the pleasure of working with in this office for the last six years. It would have been six years on February 5th. Ms. Jill Chapdelane is retiring, so this is her official last school committee meeting. She is our Director of Curriculum. She started, it's actually her birthday, on February 1st. That will be her last day here in Webster. And then on February 2nd, she is jumping in a car and traveling down to her retirement life, which I'm a little jealous about. But I just want to say thank you to Jill. She has brought so much to the Webster Public Schools over her six years here. We were talking about it today. And just for a visual to see, as you know, Jill has been heavily involved in bringing a lot of new curriculum and a lot of new high-quality instructional materials to Webster, and she's been critical in that. She's also been critical in the development of our professional development across the district. Where we came from when Jill started six years ago was this one little calendar, and it had just little words on what was happening that month throughout, with no detail. You kind of had to figure it out. You knew in the building what you were doing. Principals kind of guided to, six years later, having detailed grids that break out that are individualized for our staff across the district, so we can provide top-quality professional development. Her connections and the level of PD that she has brought to this district is second to none. I would have to say that I've heard from many people in my time, even in the business office, how fortunate we are to have such quality professional development here in Webster compared to other districts and what they do. So I just wanted to recognize Jill tonight and say thank you so much for your years of service. We have been blessed to have you, and you will be very missed, but I'm sure you're gonna have your best life down in Carolina and enjoying every moment of it. So I just wanted to say thank you so much.
So it's really interesting, because I feel like I don't even know where to begin. This is such an amazing district to work for. The School Committee, you are an amazing team of people that just help the district move forward in so many different ways. Superintendent Perangeli, you are an amazing leader. The trust you have in us is just, it allows us to be the best version of ourself. And we're able to move mountains because of that. And you have that for each and every one of the people that works for you, but also for everyone in the district. And I appreciate the School Committee's faith in our superintendent. It's just, we have a great collaboration, and I think that that's something that we should be very proud of. And this is difficult, because it's interesting. I have seven official workdays left, but I have a lot to do still. And I'm sure I'll be doing work on my last day at the last minute. But I have such fond memories of this district and everything that we've been able to accomplish, and it's just been an incredible ride. I came into this profession because I care about kids, and my goal was to make an impact, to help principals, to be able to help teachers, to be able to help kids. I hope I was able to do something there, but I, so much gratitude for everyone who does this job every day. This is the hardest career to be in. It's such a hard career, and I was just saying goodbye to some teachers today after we had a curriculum renewal meeting. And I just care about everyone so much, and I'm gonna be thinking about you and wishing you the best, and I'm here if you ever need me. Just give me a ring. But thank you to everyone for making this an incredible six years. This has been the highlight of my career. I could cry, because I do really care about this district, and I'll miss you all so much.
We do have a little something for you. We have to make it travel-worthy. Usually you get a nice plant or something, but we have something that you could take on the road, so you just navigate it a little different, but it's something that you can take in your car and you can keep with you on your way down, and hopefully some fond memories of your time here. And we just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just so you know, I prepared something. I shot from the hip today. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And Jill, just on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank you for all of your many contributions to the district, whether it be curriculum-focused, leadership-focused, stepping up for committees and other tasks as we've needed you, and just can't thank you enough for your dedication and everything that you've done for us. Great, well, thank you. Bittersweet. Thank you. Send pictures, we want to know that you're enjoying yourself. Yep, right. Well, once again, thank you.
That's okay. I'm still beautiful. Leaps to the imagination. Okay. Now my heart is full. So next, I'm gonna jump around with permission from the committee, if you're okay. We have another guest here tonight. We have Susan Farrell, as promised, from the Central Mass Collaborative, actually here tonight. I expected her last meeting, but unfortunately, I gave her the wrong date. I looked at the wrong calendar, so she was gonna show up on Wednesday, so I'm glad I realized it before Wednesday actually happened. So she is here tonight, and she is gonna give us an update. As you know, the district is part of two collaboratives. We're a part of the Central Mass Collaborative, which is, has members of Oxford and Worcester. We are also part of the Southern Worcester County Collaborative, which is made up of about 17 districts. Monthly, I go to the collaborative, and we meet as a board and discuss the programming, and Susan always gives us an overview of what's going on. And I just thought it would be nice to put a name with a face and give her the opportunity to brag about the collaborative a little bit.
Thank you so much. I want to thank the superintendent for inviting me here tonight, and the School Committee for letting me present. It's my pleasure to be here. I have a very short PowerPoint presentation, just to highlight the collaborative. Every year, the collaborative is required by DESI to do an annual report, which we share with our board. The board approves, and then they share it with the School Committee. So this year, they asked that I come and share the annual report with you about what the collaborative is doing. And as the superintendent said, the collaborative was formed by Worcester and Webster, and then Oxford joined in 2020, so we have three member districts. The collaborative has three buildings that are all in the city of Worcester, and this report is in compliance with DESI's, the Section 43 of the Acts of 2012. If you want to click to the next page. The report highlights our programming. So CMC runs three distinct student programs. We have therapeutic programs that run grades K through 12-plus, and four separate cohorts that we do from elementary, middle, and high school. Our therapeutic public day schools provide an education with an equal focus on social-emotional development. And then next slide. Our second track is ABA-based programming, which again runs grade K through 12-plus. These programs provide education with embedded interventions based on the principles of ABA, and are for students on the autism spectrum, with autism spectrum disorders or other developmental disabilities that require that type of programming. We also have short-term alternative education programs. So we have a Woody Day School, which is for students who are long-term suspended or expelled. Rockdale High School provides a high school experience for students who are recovering from substance abuse disorders. And then we have an assessment center, which is grades 7 through 12, and that's for, also short-term stay for stabilization or evaluation. In addition to our academic programming and behavioral supports, we have art, music, and physical education, and we offer all supplemental services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy. We have LD services, ESL services, so anything that a student would get in a typical high school, in addition to the supports that might be needed per their IEP. Per our collaborative agreement, we have three objectives that we report out on each year. So our primary objective is obviously to provide a challenging academic experience and to improve the academic achievement of our students. So while our programs have a specific focus based on the student's disability, we do want to also make sure they are getting a very rigorous education and meeting the requirements of the sending district. So, and I think we do a great job. I think the thing I like to highlight the most is that 80% of our seniors graduate with a high school diploma. And, you know, we do have some students who are obviously on an MCAS All-Track or are gonna be with us until they're 22, but they do have a great rate of helping those seniors get into, get their high school diploma. And we had six students that actually went on to college last year out of the 20 that graduated with us, so we were very proud of that. This year, so this is last year's report, but I'd like to highlight that this year we actually have 20 students out of our high school that are going to early college. So we're able to partner with Quinn Sigeman, and we have students now and are hoping that more of them than when they graduate will go on to get an associate's or higher degree. In addition, we offer a professional development to our staff, and it's available to our sending districts as well. We do, for our own staff, three full days, four half-days of PD in a variety of areas that are very comprehensive. I'd love to know what you do here, because we're always looking to see how we can expand what we're doing and support our districts in that regard as well. And then, I think most important for districts and for school committees is that we provide all of this at a very cost-effective rate. So I'm gonna have you go to the next slide. And this is how we compare. So across the top, you'll see our programs, and that first line is our daily rate. And then below that are other programs that provide similar supports and services and their cost. So we are really competitive compared to these, and I want you to know, these are our non-member rates. Our members actually get a discount, so the rates for our member districts is about $100 per day less than this. So very competitive, cost-effective, and again, I think it's quality service. So in summary, in addition to us providing a solid academic foundation, our students also are offered a diverse range of enriching learning experiences. We do field trips, we do community involvement, we're doing early college this year, we do pre-vocational vocational support for our students, and I think overall provide a very good education, along with that IEP support for students who maybe cannot be supported in district. So we appreciate the support of our board and the dedicated community of our staff, some of whom you see here, and the support of our community partners and partner districts. So I want to thank you for letting me give you a little bit about the collaborative, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I also think it's important to note that when Susan has been there for five years at the collaborative, and when she started, it was struggling financially. They were going through some difficult times, and now the collaborative is very solid financially and is doing well. They are able to put money in their retirement, and they are being very fiscally responsible in how they operate now. So they've done an excellent job with that over the past five years under Susan's leadership.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Thanks for making the trip out here tonight, snowy night.
No, it's my pleasure.
Great, very informative. Any questions or comments from the committee? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, thank you. Thanks. All right, so I'll get us back on track to the top. So as I reported at the last meeting, the district leadership team is continuing to do our walkthroughs. Thank you. I wanted to share with you, I put in the packet, a copy of the walkthrough tool that we are using and how we are gathering data across the district that helps us inform our instructional priority. So a little bit of our process, we go through as a team. We divide and conquer. We have three different teams, we go to three different buildings. We all have our walkthrough tools. We go into a number of classrooms. We usually do four classrooms. We each fill out our own tool and what we think we see in the classrooms, and then we go back, we debrief as a team. We come up as a consensus on how we want to report out as a team, and we put that all into a Google form, which then goes into a graphic, so that way we have data that we can report back out to the district with. Our hope is that, you know, as we're seeing trends across the district, and that's what we're trying to report, we're reporting on the trends that we see. How are we working towards our instructional priority? This helps guide us in what we need to do to provide supports. It helps us guide our instructional coaches and what supports they need to provide. It helps guide the principals to know what's going on in the building and where we need to see our focus. So this is really important that we continue this, because it really helps us define and refine what our processes are, so that way we're really keeping a focus lens on what we need to, it's data, right? And that's what we're looking at. We're doing so much data collection around the district and looking at attendance, looking at everything, and this is another piece of data. We can't afford to wait for a year to fix something. We can't afford to wait to the MCAS. We have to be constantly looking at our processes and our procedures and our instructional strategies and what we're doing in the classroom, and how can we better support the staff in the buildings to improve? And so that's what this process is doing, and this is, I think, the first year that we've really been consistently doing this on a regular basis. We've had GLEAM, but GLEAM only happens a few times a year, and this is the last year of GLEAM, so we will be continuing this practice on a regular basis within the district ourselves, so it's sustainable, and we can help improve our instructional strategies. Do you have anything you want to add? Anybody from the team? If you'd like to add, please do.
Good evening. I think we talked about this last time, where the model that our state system of support partners uses with Webster or across the state had changed, and how instead of supporting, like, specific teachers and schools, their model this year is to support our leadership team. And so we've been working at one of our DLT meetings with our SSOS partners, who've helped us sort of articulate some processes for inquisition of data, like interrogate the data. Which data should we look at? How frequently? And then what do we do with that? What kinds of plans do we make? And then making sure that we come back to it, so that we create action plans, and then at the next meeting, we follow up on what we said we were going to do. I think we've had a couple of cycles, and what we found is that we've, like, we want to, we want to take that work that we're doing with our SSOS partners and make it our own. And so we've started having a similar process at our full DLT, which includes our APs and Deans, where we've made a commitment to, at every one of those DLT meetings, start with an attendance update. We just added another piece of data, which is looking at Ed handbook, and our goal is to eventually get to the place where we take a look at attendance, our behavioral data, and correlate that with academic performance, so that we ultimately are talking about student outcomes, both academically and behaviorally. So it's a process that I think has been building itself. We're continuing to refine the tools, we keep practicing, and then we keep, we come back to the table and we say, well, this worked, this didn't work. So it's a, it's a process, but it's a process that we needed. We hadn't had necessarily a process, a solid process for interrogating data and creating action steps, and so we're happy that we're well in development of that.
Absolutely. So our schedule is typically, at the beginning of the month, we have our regular DLT, where we meet to discuss ongoing issues within the district or anything, just business. And then the second meeting of the month, we do a full DLT. This is where we pull in our Deans, our Assistant Principals. We're looking at data as a whole team. Last week, we looked at attendance data, we were looking at Ed handbook, which is our discipline data, tying it all together, and then looking at academics on top of that. How does one impact the other? And then what are our action steps? And then the third meeting of the month is our DLT meeting, which is, that's where we partner with our SaaS team, and that's where we continue to do our walkthroughs and review data and meet as a group for that, to help guide us with our instructional priority. So there is a lot of good work going on behind the scenes, and I'm excited that the work revolves around data, because I think we need to, you know, as you know, I'm very strong in a belief that data should be supporting our decisions, and we should be looking at that as we move forward. Even though this is an educational environment, data should still drive the decisions that we make here in education also. So I think we're on the right track. I think we're, the team is doing a great job. I think we have a lot of great tools, and we're refining. When something doesn't make sense, we adjust, because we're in the early stages of this. I think this is the second or third version of the tool that we're clarifying every time we go through. Does it give us, you know, is it, is it answering? Do we need to tweak it? What do we need to do with it? And so, and the goal is to have good data that we can then share back with the staff and bring back to them. Are there any questions about that?
Chair? I was just gonna ask you that. Do the teachers get this data?
Yes. Yep.
So they can discuss?
Yep. Yep. So once we go through the walkthroughs, there'll be a regular report-out tool. So we started doing this tool and adjusting in December. So I have, from December to now, I've drafted a letter that'll be going out to staff with the data. And then after that, on a regular basis, after we review every walkthrough, another memo showing what'll go out. And the, and the information that we've been collecting is cumulative. So every time we do an additional walkthrough, it gets added to the dated before to see if we're improving on that. Any other questions? Thank you. That was a good question.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And then, moving on, I want you to know, we did have our professional development day on Tuesday. That was, the date should be on this, January 16th. It was a snow day for most districts around. I did want to give a special shout-out to Jill and Michelle Budney for pushing this when the threats of snow were happening the weekend before. They said, what are we gonna do? I said, well, I guess we're gonna cancel, because I didn't think there was any way that we could actually pull off a remote session. And Jill said, no, I think I can do this. We can, why can't we do it remote? And I'm like, that's a lot. I don't know if we, we had a lot of speakers coming in, we had people flying in to do professional development. There were just a lot of moving targets, and she said, no, I think I can pull it off. And I said, well, you let me know. If you can do it, we'll, we'll make the call. So on Friday, we asked everybody to bring home their computers and be prepared for an online professional development if it was needed. We would update them to let them know if we could do it, and certainly, by the time Jill left here on Friday night, she was confident that we could pull it off on Tuesday. And it was a very successful day on Tuesday for PD. There were no issues, people did it from home. It was not a canceled day, it was productive, it was high-quality professional development. Jill had sent out new grids on Monday before the Tuesday, which all included all the links and every, all the information anybody needed to access their professional development. So I think overall, it was a very, a very good day with high-quality PD, and I think it was appreciated by our staff. So thank you for that. It was a great day. Next, I have Kathy Barris here tonight. You guys haven't seen her for a while. She is our Director of Student Support Services. I don't think you need to know that, I think you already know that, but she is gonna give us a brief special education update.
Hello, everyone. So I know that we touched on some information when the budget presentation was completed on special education statistics, and I didn't know if anybody had any questions related to that. Certainly, if you do, I'm happy to talk about that tonight. I wanted to just highlight a couple of things with regard to special education that I think is important for Webster and that have been very beneficial. First of all, I think the addition of our Assistant Director, Shari Hare, she came on board last summer as the Assistant Director, and she's just been, you know, a phenomenal addition to the central office. Shari has an excellent background in, as a teacher in curriculum and special education and programming, so it's just been a breath of fresh air to really work with her, you know, during this past six months. So the focus for us for the second half of the year is really going to be around program assessment and evaluation, and it ties in really nicely to the focus, you know, that was described for our learning walks, because one of the focuses for those has been on, you know, our appropriate scaffolds and supports being provided for students who are MLLs and students with disabilities. So we want to certainly dive a little deeper and take a look at all of our programs, but in particular, you know, looking at our inclusion programs with an eye on equity and, you know, what we are offering for students in that environment. So I think that the other piece of it is going, is focusing on culturally responsive outcomes and practices for our students, and taking a look at what we're doing in Tier 1 and Tier 2, what those efforts are, and, you know, making sure that our, you know, core curriculum is certainly supporting all of those students, as well as what are we providing for direct instruction for the students who have IEPs. So that is gonna be our focus, and I think, again, I just wanted to thank Shari for all of her hard work, you know, especially during the last four or five months, and, you know, we really are, you know, hammering down. last four or five months. And, you know, we, we really are, you know, hammering down. And we have a lot of work to do this spring. And speaking of that, one of the focuses for the professional development day for the special education teams was having a training on our new IEP forms. So you may be aware, I'm sure some of you are more aware, that the Department of Education has been focused the past several years on this new IEP project. And it has culminated to a pilot this year and an adoption for the next fiscal year to go forward with utilizing the new forms that have been prepared by DESI. Although we still are told it's still a little bit of a work in progress, you know, there may be some additional changes. But, you know, I think that we're at a point where we really need to know, okay, so how do we roll this out and do this? So we were very, very fortunate for our professional development to have Dr. Margaret Reed work with us on our PD for staff, on what the whole thing is about. And Dr. Reed was part of the IEP project herself. She was part of the team that looked at the old IEP, looked at the historical components, as well as, you know, what are the changes in the regulations over time to bring us where we need to be in terms of our support for students with disabilities. So we're very, very fortunate. She was here with us for half of the day on Tuesday, the 16th. And the second half of the day, staff worked on the IEP checklist, which was a part of their assignment from her. And we'll be getting back together in March for our full day PD day, where she will be coming back. And we'll hopefully be in person and be able to do some further work in breakout rooms. We did do a lot of breakout rooms on, on the PD session. So that worked really well. And we were able to meet by grade levels with each of the ETLs kind of being facilitators for those sessions. So for, to support the new IEP project, the 274 grant, which was always our special ed improvement grant, was funded by the Department of Ed. And we have written that to help us support the direct PD from consultation, but also for us to be able to do some PLC work in the spring and the summer, so that we can make sure that all of the teams are going to be able to hit the ground running as of the end of August, next school year. So we are well on our way. We will be working with our IEP program provider through Power School to make sure that, you know, we have what we need in terms of the forms in their system. And, you know, we're really excited about the changes and learning a little bit more about what's involved with that. Just for your benefit, the focus of the new IEP is, well, there's a lot of new focuses. But I think the most important one for me is that we are tasked with making sure that we have a higher level of meaningful parent and student participation, and including students even as early as preschool, with having a voice in, you know, what they have for goals. And I think the reason that's so important is because we talk on the other end of this, of the spectrum for special education about self-determination. And are our kids ready to move from high school and go out into the world and be able to support what they need, both for their disabilities, but also as people in college situations and work situations. So it's, you know, I think starting at an early age is really, really important. So we'll be doing a lot of work with our parents. That will also be part of the work that comes out of the 274 funding. So we're excited about, you know, really getting this rolling for our students. This year, we are trying to increase the participation of students, especially at the high school level, where they really kind of have more of a voice in running their meetings and having a more important piece of that. And the other focus for me that is really, really important, and we've been stressing this for a long time, again, is the focus on data to support, you know, the progress that students are making. And that data is what's going to tell us whether the students are, you know, where the students at, what is their current level of, of ability and performance? And then where is that performance gonna lead in terms of what we need to, to focus on for progress? So I think, you know, those two key areas are what we're going to be doing a lot of work in and making sure that, you know, we all walk away from the table knowing that kids are, you know, we have a solid plan that the parents have been fully involved with, that students have been fully involved with, that makes sense for their, for their next steps in education. So, so that's really the highlight for me. I just wanted to bring those two factors up as things that are, you know, important things that are happening in the department. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Who's the chair?
Ms. Plight?
Is the new form on the DESI site?
Yes, it is.
I'm just curious.
Yes.
Just to take a look and see what it looks like.
Sure. If you go to them, you know, to, to the main, the homepage of DESI, and you go to special education, on the bottom right-hand side, you'll see the IEP Improvement Project. And I think if you click on that, I think it's still there on that page. Let me just pull it up.
Are they taking, in this process, suggestions from school systems about how it's working and maybe changes that should be made?
Yes, they, they have already. And I'm, again, I think the, the feeling I get from, you know, what our Assistant Commissioner is, is saying is that they're gonna continue to, you know, tweak this process as, you know, as we move forward and see, you know, okay, does this continue to work and make sense and so forth? But they did vet this with various stakeholder groups. The people that were involved in the project were a lot of like parent-related groups, such as the Federation for Children with Special Needs, Mass PAC. I mean, there were a lot of people involved and had representation right from the beginning. So there was a, an opportunity for special educators, for, you know, for school systems to give feedback and so forth. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And it is on the, I'm sorry, on the lower right-hand side, there's three icons. And it's the top icon, it says IEP Improvement Project. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bares.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Thank you, Kathy. The training was really good. I did sit in in the special ed session on that morning. And I thought it was very good. Great information. So thank you. This past Friday, I attended the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Monthly Meeting. We received updates on enrollments and finances. The Director also reported out on the disability demographics. And it was interesting, because as we see a need here in the district, they're seeing the same needs in the collaboratives when they look at, collaboratives have already, have always been in the position to support school districts or member districts or other districts with those students that maybe we were having a difficult time servicing. Maybe sometimes they were behavior that we needed the additional support on. So sometimes it was our more difficult kids. And what they're seeing also as a collaborative is how the shift has gone from some of, not just the behavior, but even the disabilities for their shifting from like intellectual or multiple or communications, where a big, they've seen a big shift into supporting emotional health. And that's where they see the growth in their programs going. So they're really talking about how they've had to shift in what they service for programs themselves in the collaboratives. Because as you know, since COVID and over the past five years, we've seen a big shift in, in where our students are at. So they're seeing that also in the collaborative ends, how they've had to shift and adjust their programs with different staff, with being able to support different needs, and to grow programs and add programs in. So it's really interesting to see. It was very informational. And both of our collaboratives are really doing a great job in supporting districts and supporting us. So we appreciate them. You okay, Ms. Adiki? You need candy or something? You're okay? Wrong pipe. Yes. I continue to meet with my mentor. I met with her on January 10th. We usually get together about once a month. And I will continue meeting with her through the remainder of the school year. I will actually catch up with her on this Thursday. MAS is holding their midwinter meeting titled Navigating the Educational Landscape. And she will be there. So we will be spending some time. So I look forward to that day in networking with colleagues. And I have nothing else under my report, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Brangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? All right. Well, the next item on the agenda is our business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontas.
Good evening. So I'm gonna start with the building committee update. And I have really good news to share with you, if you haven't read the notes yet. So the general contractor bids were due last week. We opened those bids. And we received four bids. And of those four bids, the lowest bidder came in at almost 1.35 million under budget. So that was really good news for us within the project. So last night, we met with the school building committee, and we awarded that contract to Braith Builders in Mansfield. So in terms of next steps and what to expect as we move forward, because we're moving into the construction phase, is we will start some onboarding activities, which will include getting the contract signed, getting all the required documentation in relative to their bonds, their insurance, as well as their workforce, as well, and getting Corey checks settled. We actually have a kickoff meeting next week. We will be meeting the GC in person here. On Tuesday, we'll do a walkthrough of Section C. Other activities that will go on over the next couple of weeks, as we work on this sort of administrative prep for onboarding, will be some planning for site prep, getting ready to get on board. And most of the activities will really kick off in the February timeframe. One of the key deliverables in February will be the installation of the chairlift. As you know, our elevator is in Section C. So the first thing that'll happen during the school break is getting a lift put in, really in the lobby. Think of it as where the cafeteria is, right out there. There'll be a new chairlift put out there. And we're really excited to finally get the project going. It's been many years of planning and to finally be at this point. So the other thing we'll be planning is sort of our groundbreaking as well. So more to come. And, you know, we'll certainly want to have the committee there, as well as members of the school committee, I mean, school community. And we're just really excited. So.
Ms. Blight, I don't know if there's anything you want to add, Ms. Blight, or?
No, I think you did a great job. I think we're just really excited to get this going. So definitely looking forward to it. You know, I wanted to publicly thank both you and Mo for pushing this forward and just continuing to move everything along. So thank you both.
We're excited. We're ready now. This is, it feels like it's been a long year, I think, getting to this point, this past year. But we're here. And now it's gonna be smooth sailing ahead.
It's go time.
That's right. We're ready.
It's go time.
We're ready.
Very exciting. So in terms of maintenance updates, and on the topic of maintenance in Bartlett, some more good news to share. The two boilers are finally up and functional. And we have some heat in the building, especially on these pretty frigid days. So we're really excited about that. However, we do have a situation with an air handler that really, it's a shaft that services the kitchen and the service area that is not functioning. So we're currently looking for a replacement shaft, although we're finding that a little challenging, and it may be obsolete. So we are gonna start exploring some creative options for how we might be able to Band-Aid that solution. So one step forward on the HVAC. And then we have another mechanical issue that I am very confident that our head custodian, Al Young, has some really good creative ideas if we can't find a replacement part. So.
Mrs. Kontas, what is an air handler?
Yeah, I knew you were gonna ask me that. Because I had Al explain it to me as well. Think about it as like a little bit of a pulley and how it sort of directs the, the heat through that shaft. And there's sort of a break in that shaft. It broke down. So that's probably the knot. If anyone is an HVAC professional, I'm sure they're criticizing my explanation there. Sure, there's a better explanation, but.
Well, I am not. And I'm satisfied with that explanation. So thank you.
I told Mr. Young, he might have to get his inner MacGyver and pull him out if we need it. So.
And that's it for this evening.
Those are some great updates.
They are.
Thank you. A lot of hard work has gone into all of this, whether it's the boilers, but also, of course, the school building project and getting us to this point. So kudos to both, all three of you, and of course, the whole school building committee.
Actually, I should mention one other thing that we just wrapped up today with our OPM. We did a deep dive in a financial review and triangulation of all of our financials over the last several years. So we did a comparison between what we had in our municipal software to what the OPM was tracking. Now the OPM will take that one step further, and they will compare that to the MSBA system in terms of what we've submitted. And then we'll also take another review at what we have within our munis software to see if there's any other adjustments that we need to make based on accounts as well. So making really good progress in terms of making sure that everything ticks and ties the way that we would expect it to.
Perfect. Thank you. Great updates. No questions or comments from the committee? No? Okay. Well, the next item on the agenda is the principal report. And joining us this evening is Ms. Puljafico from Park Avenue. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so we've had quite a few events since the last time I was here at the end of November. Quite a few school events. We did have our Girls on the Run event that brought us all the way back to December 2nd, for those of you that were there. It was a cold rainy day, but it was very successful. The kids had a great time despite the cold. It was well-run, as usual. I'd like to thank Sam Lopez Avia, Kim Forget, and Leslie Peats, who are our coaches, who put it together, who trained the students, who work with them, and then, of course, come out and run with us as well. We also had our Winter Literacy Night on December 8th. We had a good turnout for that. We used 12 classrooms. So we have all of those classrooms functioning with different activities, math activities, literacy, art activities. That's usually put on by the PTO in collaboration with teachers and AIs. And this year, we also had high school volunteers, which was a nice added bonus. We had a school assembly. We welcomed Menguito, which is teaching and performing the music of Cuba, Puerto Rico, and Dominican Republic. That was a pre-K to four assembly. We have found that we were able to fit all of our students very snugly in the cafeteria. But it worked out great. We also had visits from the middle school and high school choruses, which was fantastic. The high school set up in the lobby. So as the students were filing into the, again, into the cafeteria, pre-K to four, they were able to hear the high school performing for them. And then the middle school performed. So certainly thank you to the middle school and high school music teachers for bringing their students down. And both of those, the Menguito and the chorus assemblies, were put on by Matt, by our dean, Matt Aronian. So he's done a lot of work to bring some real school spirit into the building and coordinate with the other buildings as well. Professional development, since last time we were here, on December 1st, we had a half-day professional development. Our PD that day focused on recalibrating our PBIS and extending what we have school-wide into classrooms. So looking for that continuity across the whole building. We are still working on Tier One, as the middle school moves into their Tier Two work. We are still working on Tier 1 as the middle school moves into their Tier 2 work. We're still making sure we have our Tier 1 solid. We worked with the May Institute. They came in and did a professional development. We've had a longstanding relationship with the May Institute, so we welcome them. And as was mentioned, January 16th, big shout out to Jill and Michelle for putting it virtual. I heard a lot of great feedback about being able to still hold that day. And it's always better to be in person, obviously, but it was really great. The presenters, the majority of our teachers were, did half a day PD in STEM Scopes, which is our science program, and half in iReady Diagnostic, which is our benchmark diagnostic program. And they had great things to say. The presenters did a fantastic job of flipping what was supposed to be in-person into virtual for our staff. And iReady was very timely as we are currently taking our iReady assessments now. So the focus was taking that data that we collect from students and turning it into actionable steps to meet our students where they are, what they need. And our curriculum instruction, we are in the current throes of access testing for our ELL students. In K, in, sorry, in grades 1 through 4, we have 107 students who take the access test and that's in, they each take four tests, so reading, writing, speaking and listening. That is not including kindergarten. Kindergarten has to take their test one-on-one. So our four ELL teachers are doing an excellent job scheduling that. They're working together and because there are four of them, they are also still able to see groups throughout that time. So we're fortunate that all ELL instruction doesn't have to stop from the beginning of January all the way through mid-February, which is how long the testing window is open. So they are doing a lot of work and a lot of collaboration to make sure we're meeting all our kids' needs. And additionally, we are also looking at new math programs. We have a math curriculum review going on right now for K to 6, really headed up by the assistant principal at P A E, Jessica Ahutsky, and Jill Chapdeline. Again, Jill's got her hands in everything, as we know. We're exploring a new program. We've met with three different programs to really explore them deeply. The programs have come in and spoken to us. We have representation from all grade levels, K to 6, as well as special education, our MLLs, administration from both buildings, because this does, this is a decision that crosses two buildings and will really impact not only K to 6, but really the instruction K to 12, as we're starting the kids on their math journey. So we want to make sure we're finding something that is developmentally appropriate for our students, supportive for teachers, and sets students up for strong success moving into grade 7 and beyond. So that is my update. Any questions or thoughts?
Thank you for those updates. Lots happening at Park Ave. Any questions or comments from the committee? No?
I just want to say thank you to our principals for all the collaboration they have shown between the schools, especially with our students being able to go to different schools for events and other things, just seeing the kids interact, kids coming over from the middle school and interacting with the elementary students, seeing them have fun, dance, being role models. Same thing with the high school kids coming over to the middle school. At STEM presentations, the high school kids asking the middle school kids questions. And it's just, there's a lot of real collaboration going on throughout the buildings and I think that's great. And, you know, especially as we want to market our, market our schools, right? We want kids to be interested and say, this is what I can do when I get to high school or this is what I can do when I get to the middle school. So I think that's really important and our principals are doing a great job in coordinating all of that. So I know I am really appreciative of that, so I just want to say thank you for all that good work. That's great.
And there's nothing that, you know, I, there's nothing that gives you the chills quite like seeing a high school senior see their kindergarten teacher and give a hug.
Yes, that's true.
You know, and they're, you know, it's, it's like in the kindergarten teacher's eyes, they're that five-year-old little student starting their first day of school again. And I think the, you know, the seniors or, you know, those high school students see them the same way, so.
Absolutely.
There were lots of hugs when the middle and that high come over to perform.
I think it's great.
That's great, yeah. I would agree. It's great to see that cross-pollination across the schools. Thanks for the updates. The next item on the agenda is our update from our student representative. Good evening, Mohammed.
Good evening.
He's going to need a mic.
You need a mic. Here you go. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so for my summary, at Bartlett, the students are closing up second quarter and entering third quarter. And for seniors, that means only a little bit of time left. And then, how many days? Who knows, honestly? I think it's like five months, five months, right? I think. But we are, Bartlett is hosting a snowball dance before that and there was testing happening for finals and then iReady as well. So I'm going to talk about the snowball dance, which is happening in Bartlett on February 2nd from 6:30 to 9:00. It is really cool because students can pay with their Bartlett bucks. And I think it's like the second event officially that like students can pay with their Bartlett bucks. So if they have like a, like $10, $10 Bartlett bucks saved up, that's $10 of pay that they can give, so they can go in for free. For testing, students are testing for iReady English in their English classes and then also doing finals for the quarters as well. Then I have sports updates. The boys varsity team basket, for basketball, team won a game on Monday, January 15th. The score was 48 to 43. It was a good game. And then for upcoming game, upcoming games, the boys basketball team for JV is playing Feibach Regional Middle and High School at Bartlett this Thursday. And also the four varsity teams are playing the same. Yep, those are my updates. Any questions?
Thank you for those updates.
Thank you.
Any questions from the committee from Mohammed? No? Your senior year is almost half over, I think, though, so.
I know. So fun, so fun.
Yeah. Good deal. Well, it's always nice to see you.
Always nice to see you too.
Thank you. There's nothing under Old Business, so the next item on the agenda under New Business is the acceptance of donations. We have winter coats for Webster Middle School students from Pam Brayton.
The, oh, yeah, the budget is in the wrong category.
Oh, I have that.
It's not on.
Oh, okay. Well, let's move, do, would you like me to backtrack over to Old Business?
Doesn't matter.
I'm working off of the printed-out version here. All right, well, why don't we move into Old Business where I'm told that there is an item there and it's not under New Business? And it's the second review of the FY '25 budget.
Yeah, and actually tonight was, we actually have nothing new to present to you tonight. So we had taken your comments. We are going back. We have been working as a team. We continue to have budget meetings. We are working, just reviewing different drafts of the budgets and trying to make things work. We know budget numbers are coming out hopefully next week, I believe. Is it the fourth Wednesday? Is that tomorrow?
I think it's tomorrow.
I think it's tomorrow, actually. So hopefully we'll be getting some budget numbers soon from the state and that'll give us a real idea on, on what we're working with. So to come back and present something that's just a little different and seemed to make sense at that point, as we're still working through. We are taking everything back. We are looking at different options, different alternatives. We do want to schedule with the committee a budget workshop during the week, so we figure that'll be a great time for you to really sit with individual teams and ask, you know, a deeper dive in questions and find things out about the individual buildings. So we will be looking for that, to schedule that one night. And I think that should happen towards the end of February, middle to end of February, because by then we should really have a handle on the Chapter 70. We've already gone through the budget a few times as a team, talking about different options. And this will give us the opportunity to really come up with a draft that we feel good about, that we can bring to you and give you the opportunity to ask us some questions about that draft in a, in a more informal setting, if that sounds like a plan to the committee.
That sounds good to me. How about everyone else? Yeah?
After you've had time to reflect on the budget from last meeting, did you think of anything that you wanted us to take back in addition to your comments from that night? I know we've taken your comments into account as we start our discussions, but I didn't know after having some time to sit on it, sometimes you're hearing things for the first time and then you take it back and you say, I wish I would have thought of that or maybe brought that up, so. And if you can't think of it tonight, just feel free to send an email or give me a phone call and I would be happy to talk to you about that in further detail.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Is that the only item under Old Business?
It is.
Okay, great. The next item on the agenda under New Business is the acceptance of donations. Winter coats for Webster Middle School students from Pam Brayton.
I don't have the sheet on that, but I know we received some winter coats as a donation for Webster Middle School students. I don't know how many you received approximately.
I don't know how many exactly. I know there was a large bag of items of coats and mittens and hats as well, so I would say there are probably at least 10 to 20, 10 coats and other items in the bag.
So I'd like to recommend accepting those.
That's great. How very generous. Any questions or comments from the committee about these donations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes and on behalf of the committee, thank you to Pam Brayton for that generous donation for our students at Webster Middle School. And the next item on the agenda is the review and approval of the school calendar for the school year 2024 to 2025.
Thank you. So in front of you, you had, should have a copy of the school calendar and then a cover sheet that with the highlighted days. Again, we've been talking a lot about data as a team and this is another area where we took a look, look at some data. I will give some highlights. I don't, I'll just run through briefly. School, it looks like, will come back with new teacher orientation on the 20th and 21st, followed by the 26th, 27th and 28th of the next week, which would be professional development for our teachers. So first day of school for students would be on Thursday, August 29th. Some of the big changes to the calendar this year, I will point out, are some of the half-days. So as a district, we've been taking a look at attendance on the half-days and we noted that our attendance is considerably lower on those days. So students are not coming to school or parents are not sending their kids to school, whether it's daycare or they just can't get their student out. But we figured it, after looking at the data and moving some things around, that we would make those full days again. So in the months that we typically have a full professional development day, we used to have a full PD day and a half a PD day, we removed the half-day PD. So if you look at the calendar now, in most months, there is no professional day in September. We have a half-a-day in October. We have, for professional development, we have another half-a-day in December. We have a full PD day in January. We have a half-a-day in February. We have a full day in March, where March is a long month. We did not do a professional development day in April because of Good Friday, Easter break, and then the vacation. We did not want to do another half-day there, so we skipped that month. We kept a half-day in May and then, again, no half-days in June. So that reduced overall two half-days for Park Avenue and three half-days for the middle and high. Another area we looked at were our parent conferences. So we'd like to try something a little different this year. As you know, we have parent conferences usually on November 20th and 21st. We usually have evening conferences. What we'd like to do this year is for the middle school and high school, afternoon parent conferences are not well-attended at all. So we'd like to make those full days for our students at the middle and high school. We will continue to keep a half-a-day for Park Ave Elementary, so that way they have high attendance on their half-PD day. So Park Ave would be the only building that has a half-a-day on the PD. They would have, I'm sorry, parent-teacher conference. I'm sorry, I'm saying PD. Parent-teacher conference. Thank you for correction on that. So parent-teacher conference, Park Ave would do a half-a-day. They would have parent-teacher conference in the afternoon and parent-teacher conference at night. Middle school would have a full day of school and they would do an evening parent-teacher conference. And the same thing with the high school. They would have a full day of school and they would do an evening parent-teacher conference. And they're on different evenings, so we don't conflict with one another. And we figured that would help our attendance at the middle and high school. Do you have a question, Ms. Mallett?
I'm confused.
I confuse you with my PD stuff, I'm sorry.
Isn't Thanksgiving always the third Thursday of the month?
Thanksgiving is...
But I mean, traditionally.
It's the 20...
Third Thursday in November.
I think it's the 4th. 4th? Yeah.
Okay. I missed it a week somewhere.
That's okay, because you gave me a little heart palpitation there.
We're okay with that.
You don't want to come to parent conference on that.
Oh, okay. I really thought it was the 3rd.
No, if you see anything, because, you know, we live this and look at it all the time and then you have another set of eyes on things, so.
I would say very minor, having, you know, for example, November 6th, November 21st, they're sort of shaded. That's not in the key. Maybe if you just want to add that to make it easier for parents to interpret that.
Oh, at the top.
Yep.
Through the chair.
Yep, Mr. Adamopoulos.
I would say anything that has nothing to do with the presentation should say in July, it says the number 24 back-to-back instead of 24, 25.
Where are you at?
Oh, yeah, July.
July.
Yep.
Before we publish them, if we could just fix that.
We all want an extra day in July.
And through the chair, I'm wondering about what's listed as the 185th day, because I don't believe we should be counting June 19th as a day.
That is correct. So 1, 2, 3, that would be the 24th. Look at you guys go.
My gosh.
No, I'm, thank you for that. Anything else? No. Okay. Keep looking. Keep looking. So, so those are the big changes as far as parent-teacher conference and trying to increase some of those half-days to increase our attendance at the school. Do you have any questions about the calendar? Did I miss anything? We have our standard breaks. We have December break, which would start on the 23rd. We would come back on January 2nd, so we would have Thursday, Friday. We have February break, the third week in February. And then we have our standard April break. Our school committees' meetings are listed. I did reduce one school committee meeting in the month of April. There's typically two, but it's on break af, no, I'm sorry. It was in November. I switched it because it was the day before that Thanksgiving week. And I know a lot of people are traveling that week and it's a crazy week, so I took out that meeting on the 26th. Certainly, we can add another meeting someplace if you guys really want to have another meeting. We can make that happen or if anything comes up, as usual, we can also ask for that.
Looks good. Also, in December, we have one meeting, but obviously the, the 4th Tuesday would be Christmas Eve, so that makes sense, too.
Yep. And that's... And that's been typical. The, I didn't change anything with the school committee pattern, except for the Thursday in November, I mean, the Tuesday, and that Thanksgiving week.
Great. Any other questions, comments, observations?
Through the chair.
Ms. Mallett?
So we did find a couple of things, but have you also shared this with...
Colleen.
The locals?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay.
Yep, yep, I reviewed this with the union president, and she gave me some feedback on it.
Just so we don't have to do it, you know, make changes later.
Yep.
The only thing, and it's a cosmetic thing...
Yes, please.
You have a new symbol in here for parent conferences, but it's not put up top.
Yep, we're gonna add that.
Oh, okay.
Yep, Ms. Siddiqui pointed that out, so we'll add that up. We'll have a key for that. Yep. So I've got to add the key. I've got to fix the date in July, and I've got to fix the 185th day to be the 24th of June.
Great. That's good.
And then we have our open houses listed down the bottom, so those are there. Oh, I also wanted to point out one other thing to you. High school this year, with their new block schedule, the way their block schedule works, they have a whole new group of teachers in the second half of the year, so they didn't have an opportunity to have a parent conference with the students there. So we added a second parent conference for the high school because of the block schedule. So that would be in April. So if you look at April 9th, you will see an added parent conference there for the high school because of the block schedule and the way the teachers work. That gives them an opportunity to meet with parents in both semesters.
Great. If there's no other comments from the committee, I will entertain a motion to approve this calendar with the proposed revisions as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the principals for their work and their feedback. So I appreciate it.
It's remarkable to see, you know, the feedback already coming full circle, whether it be related to attendance data on half-days, or, you know, some of these other things happening really quickly, so much appreciated. I know it requires creativity and flexibility all around, so.
Yep, and good discussion from everybody, so the input has been great. Yep.
Good deal. Yeah, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers. And we do have a transfer request in the amount of $4,130.72, and that's going from the Webster Middle School Student Activity Savings Account, excuse me, to the checking account. Any questions about that transfer request? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.